Okay, good evening. If everyone could please find a seat, we'll get started, please. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to begin this meeting tonight by acknowledging that we are meeting on the territories of the Sauk Nation. We do wish to recognize their long history and connection to the lands and waters, as well as their governance, as well as their government. Thank you. Okay, so tonight, we are in a committee of the whole, and I have an agenda here. So counsel, I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by Counselor Parkinson, and we don't need seconders in committees of the whole. Nope, never did. Now I remember. You may need to remind me later. So anyway, all those in favor of approval, opposed is carried unanimously, and we have one item on tonight's agenda, which is a delegation from the Agricultural Land Commission. That's you. So, welcome, and thank you very much for joining us here today. And I believe it's Kim Grouthe and Jennifer Dyson, is that correct? Okay, welcome, and thank you for joining us. And if you could please turn on your microphone for your presentation, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the invitation. Kim and I were saying, as we are arriving in Sauk, we were here, I guess, about two years ago. Yeah, maybe three years ago, I'm not even sure, but it was some time ago, or not that long ago, and the growth in your community since then is unbelievable. And as I was talking to Gerard along my, as we were kind of reintroducing ourselves, my father was moved here in the old Macmillan-Bloodell days, and in those days, there really wasn't much here in Sauk, and we ended up choosing Sayward over Sauk of all places. But it tells you a little bit about what the island was, was this primary resource community. So, I'm Jennifer Dyson, I'm the Chair of the Agricultural Land Commission, and I'm also a farmer in the Alberni Valley, so I certainly come from a community that's not dissimilar to this neck of the woods, that you had a tremendous fishing and forestry history and agriculture within this community. You have some agricultural lands, but not an awful lot. And so, we'll just sort of, I mean, I'll just kind of go through a few slides that we've got. We've, we're going to talk a little bit about our governance, who, where we are right now. The revitalization, the Agricultural Land Commission and the Agricultural Land Reserve has gone through, an independent committee through revitalization. I actually began chairing that committee in the early days, and then it was finished by Vicky Huntington, former MLA from the Delta area. And then we're going to talk a little bit about Bill 52 changes, and it's quite a neat thing, because, as Kim said, it's just fresh, freshly inked regulations that came down today, so we, we'll make sure that you know how to get copies and where it all is. And that was under Bill 52, which was introduced last November. And then, we'll talk a little bit about some of the issues around cannabis regulations and that growing need within all communities, I guess. So, a little bit about the commission. Prior to the enactment of the commission in 1973, there was close to 6,000 acres being lost annually, and that was just simply, it was eaten up by development and states and highways and you name it. So when they, there was a, it was an overall agreement with all levels of government at the time to form something called the Agricultural Land Commission. And it, the reasons for the commission then were the sort of exponential growth that was probably more prominent in the Lower Mainland than it is throughout the rest of the province, but we're seeing that kind of growth all over the place. We live in one of the most beautiful provinces in this great country of ours, and it's really framed by a whole host of things. We have an incredible geography. We've got high mountains, plateaus, rivers, streams, we've got a little bit of everything, but we all compete for the land, which is in those valley bottoms, close to communities. That's where our communities have grown, and that's also where some of the best agricultural land is. So, it's certainly an area of competition, and we're very cognizant of that. And I think part of what we do is, everything about what we do is as a partnership with local communities. We are an independent administrative tribunal, so we're at arms-length from government. Big government sets our agenda, but we administer it through, as an administrative tribunal. And it's kind of done like, almost like a court of law, so we have a very, very strict set of criteria that we look at through applications. Our discussions here, obviously, is not the same thing, that's those communications, but when we're deliberating on applications, it is done by a very strict and rigid criteria, but we still look at every application within its merits. You know, is it good for the communities? Is it good for the agricultural land? Our number-one thing is to preserve agricultural land in this province. But the other part of our mandate is to encourage farming in collaboration with communities, First Nation communities and communities. So there's a, there's a whole set of principles, and what I want to say, just starting out, is that this particular relationship or partnership that we have with communities, it is not just a one-of, a little high-bye. We did it a couple of years ago, but we are here, the office is there, in Burnaby, we've got incredible staff. We have commissioners here on Vancouver Island that deal with island applications, as well as staff. So they are pretty cognizant of what's going on, as well as our regional planners, which, you know, deal with your things like your OCPs and that kind of thing. So, just like yourselves, we have, we're governed by a myriad of other things that are coming all at us. So, at the federal level, there's all kinds of issues that have impacts on agricultural land, as well as the local things that I've just talked about, your planning, your roads, your, you know, the growth for communities, that type of thing, as well as the provincial mandate. We've got agencies, or provincial government agencies, like Flynnrow, who have, are in charge of, say, water licensing and so on, so oftentimes, we're not even involved. We're actually finding that we're reinserting ourselves within those conversations, as the kinds of decisions that they're making have a direct impact on agricultural land. So there's a lot of relationships that sometimes, just like local government, we get so busy in our day-to-day business, we sometimes forget about all those other players out there. And the commission has been starved for many years by never having enough staff and resources, and we finally are in a position where we have more resources and more staff, that we can actually get out there a little bit more, and that's part of what Kim and I are here today. We're extremely lucky to have Kim, who's also had local government experience, and understands that whole philosophy behind. So here's our governance structure. We've, right now, we're at 16. We have two commissioners on the island, and a vice-chair and a commissioner, and it goes like that throughout the province. We have more in the north, and if you actually, you know, when we start to look at the map, the majority of agricultural land, or that huge body of our province, most of it is located in the north. So, right now, we have a few more commissioners in that particular area. So we're well-equipped. This is sort of our structure, and it's an interesting thing. Kim reports directly to the deputy minister, as well as myself and the commission, and then underneath Kim are all of your staff, everywhere, from your compliance and enforcement. The buck stops at Kim and myself, really, we're a pretty good team, I'd say.
Here we are.
Yeah. But it's a really interesting structure, and yet, in the office, it's not dissimilar to here. You know, the doors are open, and everybody's talking, and everybody's dealing with each other. Revitalization, I think this is probably one of the most important things, is that as we embarked on this whole revitalization, when Minister Lana Popham came to be minister, she called for a revitalization of the Agricultural Land Commission and Reserve as part of her mandate letter. And I think it had been over time that erosion of permissiveness that has happened within the regulation around the commission, it became almost like a shopping list of what you can do, and it was interpreted differently by every local community. So, if you have a threshold on a farm market or retail structure, it would be 300 square meters, but what we would find is that 300 square meters would be the shop, but then there'd be, you know, 200 more for this and 300 more for this, so you would get this morphing of these massive facilities within agricultural land. And that has been something that we don't have, is a really good inventory, what's on the land. There's some pretty major structures that have taken up agricultural land, and in every case, what happens is that that makes it harder and harder for this next generation to afford those pieces of land. As we build more and more structures on agricultural land, I'm always cognizant of that next generation. Our farm, I have my son and daughter-in-law, who are absolutely passionate about agriculture, and it is a really neat, feel-good way, but they could never afford to buy a piece of property. So, you know, we're doing everything in our power to make sure that that next generation stays on the land. And I think there's been this gradual sort of erosion, as we, as the agriculture community, get older, and we need more and more young people to help farm these pieces of property. In an area like Sauk, it's pretty cool. I was talking to Gerard a little bit about the communities we don't care about. There's an incredible sprawl that happens with communities. They just keep on sprawling and building, and what happens is that the fabric of communities that we really care about are those that have got that vibrancy of food, or small-market gardens, or places that you can buy local food. That's all part of this revitalization, and it's not the answer for every single community, but in smaller communities like Sauk, there's some real potential. And we do forget, agriculture is an economic driver. It is business. We run businesses, and it is, it's a huge business. We're a dairy farm, we milk water buffalo, and we ship our milk to another processor, and we sell that milk and the cheese on our farm, and it brings the people coming into our farm, and on and on it goes. So there's lots of different ways that we can build that vibrancy and revitalization within communities. But there is a huge, huge need to sort of re-energize the Agricultural Land Commission and agriculture as an economic driver within communities as well. So one of the things that happened with Bill 52, and it's probably something that you may not be thinking about here, is the whole, you know, the two separate zones. Years ago, the commission, the same rules applied throughout the province, and in 2014, we had a split zoning, so there would be, you know, a different set of criteria. That said, Section 6 of the Agricultural Land Commission Act always took primacy over the secondary part of the act, but that has gone back to all one zone, so there's no, you know, it was probably more difficult for decision-making in some of the northern parts of the province, where they would have to look at a whole host of economic reasons why they're making a decision or not. So what I'm going to do now is, yeah, the next one is going to be sort of more into the meat of the regulation, and Kim's going to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think this timing is excellent, because as Jennifer alluded, new regulations that brought Bill 52 into force and effect were dropped on Friday, which means here we are today with a new world order. We have a new act that has force and effect, and we actually have two regulations. So, you've probably always thought of us as a commission who has an act and a regulation. We actually have two regulations now. We have one regulation called the General Regulation that sets process and procedure, and we have another regulation that talks about permitted uses, what can and can't happen in the ALR. And that probably was, probably, it was a sweeping change. I mean, I think it's quite momentous that they've gone in and taken a look at the regulation from that perspective. But there's a number of things that have sort of changed that landscape, and we now have two new application categories related to residential use and soil and fill. Soil and fill, you've probably heard mention of, but it's always been bundled into that category called non-farm use. But the legislation now gives us four application decision-making buckets, vis-à-vis subdivision, residential use, soil and fill, and then we have non-farm use, which are clearly described in our regulation. And so for the first time, residential and soil and fill aren't actually being talked about as farming or non-farming. They are two unique categories unto themselves, and we've actually had to take our entire system offline on Friday and bring it back up today with a portal system that acknowledges these four application buckets. We now don't, we don't talk about non-farm use and subdivision anymore, we talk about use and subdivision, and that's how the regulation is very much worded. So I was going to focus a little bit on the residential side of things, the soil side of things, and a little bit on cannabis, because those are probably where you see some of the most substantial changes in our regulation. I think the definition of residential use in the act is very broad. It relates to structures, regardless of how long you use them, for part of a year or partially, it's a residence and it's an accommodation. So it's certainly much more than just your principal house, and I think that's reflected in the regulations, which I'll talk a little bit about, which were adopted on Friday, which have given some more context to what was being contemplated when they decided that residential structures were both residence and accommodation. There's been a lot of discussion about Bill 52 and the language it has with respect to there being no more, you can't have more than one residence per parcel, and the residence you do have is limited in size. And what we find in particular is that to assist with the interpretation of the total floor area, the commission has resolved in past emotion vis-à-vis their definition of total floor area, and in doing so, then, they've left it open to local governments to be more restrictive underneath that level, should they wish to do so. There are many municipalities that already had residential house restrictions of 400 square meters, 450. There's quite a range in variation, and what you'll find is, we have put together a residential information bulletin, I actually have a copy of it with me here, and this is on our website, and every local government's @info email received notification and links to this document to assist your staff and yourselves and your property owners to try to interpret what's going on with residential use. There's quite an expanded sort of array of grandfathering provisions that are contemplated here. Perhaps one of the most interesting changes that have happened with the adoption of the regulation on Friday is that there are actually some residential uses that have been removed in terms of their provision. So manufactured homes for immediate families, and accommodation above an existing farm building, as well as some provision for a second single-family residential dwelling in Zone 2 have all been removed, which means that outside of local government's ability to approve a principal residence, provided it's smaller than 500 square meters, every other form of residence, regardless of its secondary nature, if it's not a secondary suite and a principal, it would require an application to the commission.
And if I can, I mean, part of, this was just a great body of work that happened with the commission. They had done a little bit of a survey with local governments to sort of look at this whole issue of
Oh, our local government's survey.
Of second dwellings. And what we found was that it was by far, the majority of local governments really didn't feel comfortable saying yes or no to a second dwelling in terms of an agricultural lens. And I guess, you know, from a commission side of things, the, I would say, the overwhelming majority of subdivision applications came because, as a result, of that second dwelling. So, we're going to be looking at anybody that needs a second dwelling under that agricultural lens, as opposed to being couched in a housing lens for a piece of property, if you will.
Yeah. Well, the commission has actually legislated to only approve an additional dwelling if it is necessary for farm help. So that is expressly directed, and, which is very strong language, and of course, will be used. Now, what's happened, of course, is if someone is in process of building a home that may end up being greater than 500 square meters, they needed to have had their building permit approved by Friday, and they must have their foundation substantially started by November 5th of this year. So, the principal residence grandfathering provisions have some contemplation of them having more time to get their foundation under construction. The same grandfathering provisions have not been provided to additional residences. Additional residences needed their building permits, if those were required, and they also needed to have the construction of their foundation or their alteration of their dwelling well underway by Friday. And so, we're not sure what that means in terms of how many people will be caught. This is certainly something the commission hasn't historically been involved in, in terms of these applications, albeit, we have gotten non-farm use applications from some jurisdictions. In the past, you weren't comfortable with making determination if they were needed for farming. Not all municipalities, actually, were following that general prescriptive rule, which I think is what prompted government to try to ensure there's consistency. It's needed for farming and/or it's a restricted size in terms of the principal. Anyone who wishes to build a residential use that's not consistent with the legislation, they need to make an application to the commission, and that application needs to be approved. There, these application types are called non-adhering residential uses. So if you would like something that's not provided for, you now make a non-adhering residential use application, not a non-farm use application, a non-adhering residential use. So this is new terminology for us, getting used to it. And so that's a little bit on the housing perspective. Happy to talk with you, because there are provisions contemplated in this bulletin that tell you what kind of situation you're in. If you had, for example, a mobile home, there's no right of replacement in terms of what might be on the land base, but we're certainly not out there looking to take things away from people, and so that's really our main message. But just because you had something that was previously provided doesn't mean you have the right to replace it and keep it in perpetuity, so it'll be a very interesting conversation that I know, I'm sure, we'll be talking to your staff and local government staff just about the inventory and what we see happening with it in the future. What's interesting, this slide was up here, just kind of flagging for people that under the act, there was a contemplation and a change of process that was talking about notice of intent. In the new regulation that was adopted on Friday, there is some clear exemptions for fill, things that can happen without having to contact the commission, and one of them is, you can fill or remove soil to construct your principal residence, provided the area you're impacting is not bigger than 1,000 square meters, which implies that if anyone wants to fill or excavate soil beyond 1,000 square meter area, they would need to come to the commission. I'm not sure how likely that would be. But there certainly has not been the same provision for any other form of housing and/or structure. So when you read the soil exemptions, it speaks specifically to an exemption of 1,000 square meters for farm structures and for principal residents, and nothing else. We have not had a chance to put together a bulletin and work with legal counsel on the clear interpretation of all of the soil rules. We speak to those aspects that touch on the residential component in this bulletin, but in the next, even maybe possibly by the end of this week and rolling into the next week, you'll start to see us come out with information bulletins to assist with the interpretation of the legislation as it relates to all of these moving parts. But what seems to have happened, and the way this piece of legislation is set up, is there is a very finite group, I think there's actually eight things that are exempt, like applying soil amendments to your land, i.e. fertilizer or compost, that's exempt.
Normal farm practices.
Normal farm practices, top dressing, existing roads. But it's set itself up so that almost anyone wishing to apply fill in the ALR needs to either submit a notice to the commission or make an application. And the notice system that has been set up is one that comes directly to the commission, so I think their intention was, is if farmers really wanted to undertake filling for reasonable farm practices, they could submit a notice right to the commission, pay $150. The CEO, myself, and the designated staff in the Soil Division would take a look at that and have 60 days to say whether or not we felt like that was a reasonable practice, given what was happening in the ALR, or do you need to make a full-blown application to the commission. Just before I go to the cannabis, just because that's always so distracting, and we have much more to talk about with respect to the new regulations, because when we submitted this PowerPoint presentation to your staff, we didn't know that we would have new law by the time we came to actually visit you. So a couple more things I wanted to touch on. The fees have all changed now with respect to your municipality being located in Zone 1. All the fees across the province have now come to that same level. You would have seen anyone in your community paying, which was $1,500. There used to be a lesser fee in the northern part of the province, but everyone's come up to $1,500. That being said, if someone submits a notice of intent to fill and pays us the $150 directly, they actually, if it turns out that we are unable to approve it at the staff level and you need to make an application for soil removal or fill placement, you get to subtract the $150 and you pay us $1,350 instead. So, you know, if you end up having to go the full-blown route, you will have, at the end of the day, paid $1,500, but if your filling proposal is something reasonable and in keeping with normal farm practices, you only need to submit a notice of $1,500. And I think for now, there is, that piece about accommodation, I did flag that agritourism accommodation and tourist accommodation, which is new language merely describing bed and breakfast, have been put into the residential section of the new regulation, which is a bit unexpected. So we're coming out with a bulletin, just talking about those two pieces, because while they pick up some parts of the residential section quite cleanly in terms of how do you interpret the regulation, they are a bit of a different animal that has a commercial connotation. And it's really clear that local governments still have the authority to regulate below any of the levels contemplated in our act, and you still have the ability to prohibit lots of jurisdictions, for example, prohibit agritourism accommodation. And so, local governments continue to have that power. It's just not as clear when they pulled some of the uses out of the farm and non-farm use sections, that used to have headings that say, "You can't prohibit these things, but you can prohibit these things." In moving soil and fill and residential use into their own sections, it by no mean precludes your ability to adopt stronger regulation, and that's clearly identified in our bulletin.
So, just as, the reason why we're doing all of this kind of interpretation ourselves is it is no different than your own regulation within municipal affairs and housing. Somebody else has done it, and now you have to live by it. So, we're, as Kim said, I think her phone has been going a little crazy today with just all of the little nuances, and we're trying to figure it out as we go along. And that's something that we have a full commission meeting in April, and a lot of more interpretation ourselves, policy directives that make it a little clearer for everyone. And I think that is very intentional in terms of regulation, it's always interpreted, and we're going to be looking at the commission to try to make sure that it's clear for every single, everybody has the same set of rules.
And that's what this bulletin really does. It's actually a 15-page bulletin, because someone's going to want to know what happens if they have a manufactured home. Well, they can go to the section that speaks about manufactured homes. They're going to want to know what happens if I have a vacant piece of property and I want to build a residence, so there's a section on that. They're going to want to know what happens if I have more than three houses already, and under what regime. So we wanted citizens and local governments to find the types of structures you were contemplating in a section, and allow you to go to that section and read it, respecting there are general provisions that apply. So, I, we did joke that it took a bulletin almost as big as the regulation to interpret just one section of it, but we hope it's helpful, and its companion piece will be out tomorrow on accommodation, and then we'll continue to roll them out to assist you in working with what is some very new and unique legislation. So that was kind of like, wow, what's really, really new, and what felt like was new before we got here, was the discussion about cannabis production in the ALR. I think this was my next slide, yeah, sorry. And what I like to start with were the policy goals that were provided to us by the provincial government when they adopted the regulations and provided them to us to begin to work with. And really, the provincial government was intentional in drafting it the way they did. They wanted to preserve the productive capacity of the ALR, they wanted to respect local governments' concerns and interests in continuing to have flexibility around regulating these particular uses, and had to acknowledge federal legalization and people's rights and people's rights to medical cannabis. And in doing so, they adopted a fairly specific set of regulations that by very nature of how they worded it is very informative. And if you love reading info bulletins, we have info bulletin number four that's there to assist you with the interpretation of this piece of legislation. At the time lawful meant it could only be medicinal cannabis because when this regulation was adopted, recreation wasn't legalized yet, but since that date, of course, it has been. And this piece of legislation is very predicated on everything being in soil, either out in the field or in some kind of structure. That entirely of soil means not like a little bit of anything else entirely of soil, which in itself is very determinative. And it was all this challenge around determining under construction, but I think what's most informative is if someone wants to convert a structure to cannabis production, it actually had to be a structure that was for growing of crops. So we're running into lots of issues and challenges. This actually does, this legislation doesn't allow for the conversion of livestock structures, for example. Someone had a poultry barn, dairy barn, some barn, you actually don't have the legal right to convert it to cannabis production like you would greenhouse. So for example, we were just talking the other day, there's been nine million square feet of greenhouse conversion announced for cannabis production. We were in a facility that's over a million square feet and while that very same day we were directed to one that's over 2.1 million square feet. It had been lettuce and it's going into cannabis production. So those facilities, largely it's the vegetable production industry that's converting to cannabis. So nine million square feet of conversion announced just in greenhouse and those, so, you know, the industry in terms of the production of cannabis is very much leaning towards greenhouse production and we think that's because there's a existing stock that meets the intention of the regulation, but we have run into some challenges with either people who were in process of wanting to convert structures that were not for the growing of crops prior to the drop date of this regulation and they have to come in and see the commission.
And as you can imagine, I mean, this is, this is a very contentious issue. We've, we've got communities and this is something that is, is dividing communities, left, right, and center, where you, you, you have proponents wanting to say, we're going to have 200 jobs, but it's next to a small acreage. And so you're, you're getting this, this very heightened emotional kind of percolator out there within communities. We were up in, in the Vernon area and that, that was very much front and center. These are things that will eventually come to the commission. And again, you know, we are, we're, we have yet to pass anything in terms of a cannabis structure and that's part of what we're doing is that due diligence. Let's go out, let's find out everything we possibly can about these cannabis facilities. As I, as I like to joke to Kim, we've been to three major huge cannabis facilities and they all have one thing in common.
Only one thing.
Only one thing.
Only one thing.
Cannabis.
But it's not even the same type of cannabis.
No.
So it's fascinating.
Fascinating. And, you know, every, the, the structures, the security, everything is a little bit different, but it's, and it's, some of them are just hitting the market and some of them have, have yet to hit the market.
Or haven't even started converting their structures.
Haven't even started, yes.
It's really interesting.
So it's quite, quite interesting.
Oh, too quick. Partially come back. Here we go. All right. And then of course cannabis that doesn't meet the criteria set out in the regulation requires an application to commission. This is a brand-new crop and commodity being grown in the ALR and producers are very frustrated that we as staff won't give them the sort of golden seal of approval in terms of being consistent with the regulation. And I think it's hard for people to understand that the staff that work at the commission, we're not the statutory decision-makers, only our commissioners are. And the way to get to the commissioners is with an application. And, you know, we can appreciate that I think local governments everywhere are, in some instances, struggling with the decision to forward or not forward their proposals and we can appreciate that and, and we believe in some instances, we won't be in a position of deliberating because a local government will decide not to send it. We do have five in the system right now that haven't been before commissioners for decision-making, but will be. And they're pretty much all in Zone 1, but different communities for sure. And those are sort of the highlights, but we're welcome to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation today. I just have a question. If we as a council receives an application, whether it's for cannabis or exclusion or inclusion or whatever, and I, I'm guessing we have options, we can either refer it with a recommendation, no recommendation, or reject it. Do they all advance to you irregu-, like depending on those? How much of the local government comment weighs into a decision?
Well, a, a, again, your set of, of eyes on, on a particular application will be completely different than ours. Ours is around that agricultural framework, if you will. From a local community, you, you have your own set of guidelines and principles that you, that you're governed by through your OCP and that process. So if it's an application for cannabis, for example, you will have had considerable discussion here at your particular table, but we might not be looking at those same things that you're looking at. Ours will be that agricultural lens and it, it, and that's part of what we're here for is to, to talk more about what the, you know, we don't have a set of criteria other than the preservation of agricultural land. So I don't want to have a long answer, but I will, I will say this. Think about this in terms of, of countries or communities. One of the best ones comes to mind is, is a country like Germany who has a very small, tiny land base in comparison to our own province and 88 million people live there. And yet the agricultural lands within that country don't change. The communities grow, the population grows, but they, they've got some very hard edges. And we understand that British Columbia is different in that sense, that, that we've, we don't say no to everything, but we do have long discussions and it's about long-term planning. And I, and I, I know that my family and certainly the commission hears me say this often. Long-term is 100 years or 200 years or 300 years. It's not the next election. And that's the, the most difficult thing. So that's where our lens will change. You're there to be re-elected and for your community, but the values of your community are what you govern yourselves by, but we are around the agriculture preservation. And I, you know, I often will, will go into a public meeting and I'll say, how many people in this room farm that are decision-makers?
One.
And, and so, so it does alter your view of the land and what's important. And, and so that's why, that's partly why the commission came into being is because it would all be gone. There wouldn't be anything left. We'd just gobble it up and as our staff likes to say, death by guppy bites.
And just to follow up to that with cannabis, so let's say someone has received approvals to produce cannabis or is currently growing it. Can they also then make a derivative on their property? Can they also set up and?
Those rules have, yeah. So just to, so maybe go back to your previous question. You had asked if you refuse an application, does it still come to the commission? No. So if you decide to turn down an application, it won't be forwarded to the commission, which is perfectly fine with us. We have lots of things to do. So the system has been set up so you as local governments can actually weigh in and your strongest voice is to say if there's something you don't want, say no, because the commissioners have also often said, well, be careful what you may not thought you wanted because you could actually get it if it comes to the commission. And then with respect to derivatives, the legislation respecting derivatives is not expected until November 2019. So there's still more work. We don't know what the legislative framework is around the derivatives. Right now, it's just very much primary processing, so the harvesting and drying and some oil extraction. And of course, the federal process of licensing and no, we, no means negates the ability for you as a local government to have a discussion about the structure and the impact on the land base and then make a decision on whether or not you want to send it to us and have our commission weighed in on exactly how that's going to be produced in the ALR.
One of the things, and I'll just add on to what Kim was saying, and, and this might be something for your staff, you can go to the Health Canada website and there, there's all the stages of application. And, you know, that's what we're doing as well, is we're arming ourselves with as much information as we possibly can so that if, for example, we make a decision on an application, we may say, this application is only good for this. But Health Canada will say, you know, once you're in the door, you can apply for various other licenses. And, you know, we're, we don't know where that's going to go as yet, but there's a, there's a whole series of stages to decision-making as well, which is, is quite complicated.
Yeah. Like you'll be seeing proposals for structures and we will be seeing proposals for structures after readiness for completion, which doesn't mean they're licensed. Some facilities aren't actually licensed until they've done three years of production and met all the inspections and testing and quality of the plants. So when they're talking about licensing, the final licensing actually doesn't come until they're in production, but what they're getting from Health Canada is readiness or completion of readiness or readiness of completion. I've got it back to front or front to back. And that's basically saying that federal, the federal government is in principle okay with what they're proposing and how they're proposing to do it. And then they're actually in a position of then having to construct it and then the federal government will come in at the end of the day and decide. And I think that's one of those really interesting components that you're basically trusting at the end of the day, this company will actually be able to produce and become licensed and meet those requirements at, long after they've constructed their facility. So it's a very interesting process in that you are not licensed until you're actually up and in production and have met several inspection requirements. And we, one of the facilities we toured got licensed after three years of production.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Beddoes.
Yeah, through, through your worship, to either Kim or Jennifer, whoever wishes to answer the question. I have a little bit of a quandary about these agricultural capability surveys that they come to us with a consultant's report.
Yep.
Do you take that consultant's report as it's put or do you have somebody else do another report or do you just look at their facts and figures? How, how does that work into the figure?
Sure.
There's a reason why I ask this and I'll just explain. Oh, a number of years ago, I was employing a consultant and the first thing he asked me is say, what outcome do you wish it to be?
Yeah.
And, and with that, he said that without skewering the figures, he could take the same figures and do it for a pro argument as he is against argument. So I was just wondering what weight or how that figures in with the commission.
I'll start first and I'm going to pass it to Kim. Kim's also an agrologist, so this is, this is a great question for, for Kim. I, I think that, that soil capability is, is only one component that we'll look at and it's never the be-all, end-all. It just isn't. It's more around the suitability side of agriculture. If, if we looked at, for example, the tree fruit industry in British Columbia, a lot of the tree fruit industry is based on class five and six soils. It's more gravel than anything. Same with grapes. There's, there's a whole range of, of mixes of soils. So it, it, it isn't just soils, it is more suitability. Climate plays a factor. Small scale, it's not always soil-based. It's, you know, there's, there's so many aspects to agriculture. Remember one great broiler producer out in the Sook area, Judy Thompson, who, you know, they, it wasn't soil-based at all. Everything is predicated on, on the broiler industry.
And maybe I would just expand on that. We do have, the commission has adopted a policy about agricultural assessment reports and there are challenges when the expert agrologist is also serving as the property owner's agent because there is a bit of a conflict there and our policy expressly speaks to that situation indicating the commission may likely give less weight to that report if that expert is also the agent for the application because one can't be an independent expert and provide advice if you're also serving as the agent for an application. So the commission's policy is really quite clear on that front and, and referencing the B C Institute of Agrologists standards vis-à-vis the operation of experts. But in addition to myself, and I, I wouldn't describe myself as a practicing soil scientist by any means, having been in administration for so long, but we do have an on-staff soils agrologist ourselves, Katerina Glavas, that's involved in the review and vetting of agrologist reports we receive on applications. We send her out to do her own inspections depending on the complexity of the situation, as well as a request for a soils division, i.e. three additional people to deal with soil applications and the work that the commission does expressly for that purpose. But we do have a policy that kind of articulates our standards, in particular the standards and quality targets we're looking for reports. There are expected standards and if we don't believe the reports are meeting those, then our, it's very likely our commissioners will give that evidence much less weight than something else.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that.
No problem.
So I, I don't see any value in myself, for instance, going out there with a shovel on the property, digging a hole because it tells me absolutely nothing. I'm not an expert in that.
Yeah.
Because like we've had some criticism in the past of saying, well, why haven't you come out and had a look at this land? Well, I don't know. I'm not an expert in it, so I don't know what I'm going to be looking for.
Yeah. And one hole is, is not determinative.
No, I understand. I see in the studies, they do a number.
We see that all the time.
I have a lot of rock.
We, you know, we have a hundred, we have a hundred acre property and they have one test pit. Well, that's actually going to tell us nothing about the property overall. So it's kind of a quality.
Be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Counselor St. Pierre.
Through your worship, I've got some questions about the residential and the non-residential.
Yep.
Just right off the bat. If I understand correctly, the new regulations mean that we're going to be looking, are we looking at a building permit process for any structure whatsoever?
So just to clarify, you still have the same authorities vis-à-vis other permitted uses that have existed in our regulation that relate to farming, with the caveat that if they require soil, either soil removal or fill removal, either for a farm use, a residence, or some other structure, you're limited to allowing that structure to impact 1,000 square meter area. Otherwise, it appears under the new soil rules, you would have to come to the commission. So that's a bit of an unexpected component that relates to the soil and fill language particularly, which speaks directly to farm and residential. Principal residences, your building department can approve them, but only if they're smaller than 500 square meters. Any other residential structure in the ALR, unless it's agritourism or bed and breakfast or a secondary suite, would need to come to the commission. So there's no more express provision for mobile homes for immediate family. There's no more express permission for a single-level unit above an existing structure on your farm. You would have to apply to the commission for anything else pretty much other than the principal house.
All right. I remember that the previous regulations allowed up to 10 spaces, units for either RV, a tent, or a cabin for agritourism.
That's agritourism. Yep, that's still there.
Would that also fall under this category?
Yep.
Okay, so.
So it's in the residential category, but the express provision it had before still lives. So as long as you're completely compliant with that section. There are nuances around fill. It has no express permission for fill or soil removal, which is why we're looking at exactly what they wrote in terms of those. The challenge we have is if they come out and say soil fill and removal placement is only allowed for these two uses, it means it's not allowed for any other uses. You know, in your zoning bylaw, once something's expressly stated, it's, the implication is it's only allowed for those uses. So some of these other uses are going to have a challenge in that because agritourism has come out of the section it used to live in and has gone into the residential category and there's now express filling provisions. It's been set up so that an application to the commission may be required depending on how big of a footprint that use impacts if it requires fill, which is anything that's imported or soil removal.
So think about this, 5,400 square feet is a pretty big house. So the, the majority of us aren't building those, you know, an average home is around 2,500 square feet or 3,000 square feet. It, it, you know, so it's, it's just not going to be an impact in terms of local government in that sense. So it's, it's, there's very few, probably in this area of these massive homes. It's a huge.
No, but I'm, I'm more concerned in the, or more curious about the, about the other side of things.
Yeah.
Not the, the huge home, because you're right, I think that's. Not the, the huge home because you're right, I think that's, there's a limit to that and how many are needed.
Yeah.
But for example, if you're looking at 10 structures, are we looking at 10 different applications potentially to the ALC?
No. So, the way agritourism is set up is it has a 10-sleeping-unit cap. So, provided you're under that 10-sleeping-unit cap, which has always existed, then you have regulatory authority with the caveat that I think there's some challenges with the way soil and fill are contemplating it because it got put into the residential category, but it's a residential category you have consideration as a local government to make decisions on without involving the commission still.
Sure.
Yep. That's why we kind of had to treat the two bulletins separately because agritourism accommodation continues to have some express permission that didn't really apply to the other residential categories anymore.
Will some of these elements be in the fat bulletin that explains?
Yes. So, the residential one I have here is already on our website and your staff would have gotten at info push for your municipality that directed you there. The accommodation one that speaks to your interest in agritourism accommodation is expected to be posted on our website tomorrow and there would be another push to add info at all local governments letting you know it's there. But this residential one is up, the accommodation one will be up tomorrow and then we'll start bringing out additional ones to help clarify other components as we start working through it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And our staff is always available for, for answering questions to your staff as well.
Yeah, no.
That's...
Absolutely.
That's a good one.
Counselor Parkinson?
Through your worship. So, when council sends off applications to you with either inclusion or exclusion, do you look at all those applications that we send in regardless of what our comments are in regards to them?
Yes.
So, everyone, right?
Yeah, absolutely. We must, any application we get, the commissioners must review each one based on its individual merits.
Okay. Thank you.
Except for the ones that we would, we would reject.
Yes. If you reject it, we never see it. So, your staff don't forward them through the portal. They just sort of end their existence at your local government table.
It ends here. Okay. Okay. Other questions from members of council? Counselor Bateman? No? Yeah? Okay.
I'm sorry that we're running out of time here tonight. I have a lot of, well, good. Is, okay, can we...
Dialogue doesn't have to end yet.
Okay. Good. Yes. So, Counselor Park, through you, your worship. Counselor Parkinson mentioned this, a neutral or a yes. Now, when you hear that a municipality is offered a neutral on a zoning ALR exclusion, how do you read that? Are we ambivalent or is that a, how's that?
When, when, we understand local governments often don't want to get involved in, in terms of saying, we approve or, or not. I mean, that, that's a given. We certainly would, would prefer that the local government just simply ended it there and, and we take the fact that it is sent without comment as a form of approval from, from government, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we sure look to, 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 obviously to local governments to, you know, to comment on that. And we also look for your ag advisory committees or, or any input from your community as well. I mean, that's important to us as commissioners as we adjudicate these, these applications.
Now, amongst those buckets, the subdivision of land and corridor and...
Yep.
Do you, do you hear a lot of creative ideas emerging from municipalities in terms of this, this master plan of re-energizing and revitalizing fall ALR?
No.
You don't? You'd like to hear some more?
Yes.
Would you? Okay. Well, stick around for maybe 10 minutes. Patrick Golly Gale hopefully is here to, there he is. Thank you.
Yes. I, I think that is so important and so important that communities become involved. And it's, it's the utilization of agricultural land is where we want to, we want to get to. But as soon as you've got a bunch of homes on that land or you're subdivided, it's gone. There's no guarantees. So, we're, we're open to all kinds of creativity and certainly use.
Counselor Parkinson, and then we'll need to wrap up.
Through your worship, I would just like to say, seeing as I knew she was going to say that, that we next have our CRD food and farm law and trust giving a presentation right now after you.
Oh, that's fantastic.
So, it might be really interesting for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We, yes?
I just wanted to comment that how helpful you have been to me personally for me to make decisions sitting here, that information is invaluable to me. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And I, I want to say this last thing. We are there, please, we're, we're, we're not up here somewhere. We're, we're just human beings trying to all find our way, but we're, our office is always open and we are more than welcome to any kind of dialogue in the future, anytime.
We really appreciate you taking the time to present to us tonight and it's likely as Counselor Bateman had said, as we dive into our priorities and look at where we're going, it may be the case that we would invite you back, but maybe frame it with a bit more, here's what we're thinking, what do you think? And maybe get a bit more context. This was more for the benefit of our newly elected to have an understanding of how you operate.
And Mayor, you know, one thing that we, you know, there can be an awful lot of dialogue staff to staff as well so that, you know, don't hesitate to sort of get your staff up to speed in terms of, of sitting down with ours so that, that there is more of that dialogue as well.
And maybe I can just make one plug respecting that it's a very interesting year. We have lots of new elected officials around the province. We have new laws. The commission is having six regional seminars around the province and elected and staff from local governments are invited to attend. I believe one on the island is in Nanaimo on May 1st. I hope I got that day right.
I know.
So, you'll find us there and we can have more dialogue at that session as well. It will be a day of presentations that aren't just limited to the commission. We will have the Ministry of Agriculture talking about some of the work that they've been doing as it relates to agriculture and that's just one opportunity that's coming up.
And the success on the island, maybe we could do a couple, so.
Sure.
As well as a UVCM conference.
Yeah. And we're always there.
Yeah. And we're doing AVICC and you'll, you'll find us around.
We'll be in Hollywood.
We'll be around.
Okay. So, just for the public, we, we have a very limited time. Does anyone have any questions that they would like to just bring forward perhaps? Okay. So, thank you very much and safe travels back.
Let's keep going.
Okay. We can hold on the clapping. You know how I feel about clapping. Motion to adjourn the committee of the whole, please. Moved by Counselor Bateman.